Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It is Monday, January the 3rd, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Prior to the meeting, we are going to swear in a few elected officials.
Okay, so I'll start with Wendy and George. And I'll have you stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Clerk Representative, City Council Representative, of the City of South Haven, Michigan, according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Awesome. And then Scott, for you. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Mayor of the City of South Haven, Michigan, according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Wonderful.
Thank you, everybody. Welcome, Wendy.
Thank you.
I guess I'll call it to order again. Maybe I wasn't supposed to do that yet, sorry. Now let's call it to order. The invocation this evening will be given by Ms. Beverly Brown of the First Church of God. And good evening, Beverly.
Hi. First of all, I'm not clergy from the First Church of God, but I'm probably here because I'm part of a prayer group that meets every Friday morning at 8:00 at Elkenburg Park, or whether like this, we meet virtually. And we've done this for a couple of years. We started out just praying for special events that were over at Elkenburg, and now we pray for the neighborhood, for situations. We pray for all of you. We pray for our police. We pray for all the workers. Yeah, so that's why I'm here. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, thank you for helping us through this day. Thank you for giving this city commission the privilege to have an impact on lives of those who live in South Haven, or who happen to visit or work here. We pray specifically for Letitia, Joe, Wendy, Jeff, George, Steve, and Scott. We also are thankful, Lord, for all those people who helped gather information to help these, this commission, make informed decisions, like Kate, and Griffin, and Travis, and Bill, and Megan, and all the members of all those city boards. Thank you for their diligence and expertise. Please be with this body tonight as they listen and ponder what each issue involves. Be with all the citizens that come forward tonight with concerns. Help us understand their views, and help us to be accepting of decisions made here. Thank you for giving all of us a voice. And, Lord, we thank you for our police force, for Chief Natalie, who all worked to protect us. May they be protected too. And always make us mindful of the poor among us, and how we can better serve all of those who are a part of South Haven. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. And thank you for keeping us in your prayers. And we should point out that this is an Elma College graduate that was just up here, so go, Scott. Good job. All right, now if you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, Megan.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onooki.
Here.
Joe Reeser.
Steve Schleck.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
I make a motion to excuse council members Wilkins and Reeser for personal reasons.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to excuse council members Reeser and Wilkins. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, they are excused. That takes us to the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion regarding the agenda? See, none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. And next, we have an update from our Van Buren County Commissioner, Ms. Gail Patterson Gladney. And good evening, Gail. You've come bearing gifts.
Yes. Well, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
Yes, well, I have some Michigan Trails maps and directories for all of you, as from michigantrales.org. And also, we have their magazine. I don't know if you've already get that. It's a guide to over 2,400 miles of Michigan's best non-motorized biking, hiking, and water trails. So that's, there you go. And that's the 2021, and soon as the 2022 comes out, I'll try to get that to you. Okay, I wanted to read from a news, immediate news release from the Van Buren Cass District Health Department, and I'm going to give a copy of this I just got from Danielle Persky to you. And I can send an electronic copy to her if you need it. But it's the Omicron variant has been identified in Van Buren County. We have the first resident was identified. And this is a quote from Danielle. "It was only a matter of time until the Omicron variant made its way to our district, but the latest identification further emphasizes the importance of testing, especially after the holidays. With limited testing ability, availability, it is ever more important to keep wearing masks in public and self-quarantining if you have been exposed to COVID-19." And that's from Danielle Persky, Health Officer, Van Buren Cass District Health Department. Her news release continues on, and I will, as I said, I gave that to Kate. But I do want to mention that there are two new testing sites that have been added. One's in Cass County and one is in Van Buren County. The Cass County one is at the Ascension Borgess Lee Hospital in DeWajac. And for our residents, Van Buren County, the Bangor High School Football Stadium Team Room, it's a drive-through event, it's 801 West Arlington Street in Bangor. That's every Tuesday, 8 to 2 p.m., and as I said, starting tomorrow, and then every Thursday, 3 to 7. And if you get a chance to look at the news release, which I just got this evening, I think it will give you important information, and how does it help your residents stay safe. And as I will say from one of the items in here, vaccinations for five-years-old children and older, and then the booster doses for those who are eligible are being recommended. Okay, then the next thing I wanted to say is of Van Buren County, tomorrow, we're going to have our organizational meeting. Every year, the commissioners have an organizational meeting where we talk about strategic goals and looking forward, and also, we choose our chair or our vice chair. As you might have seen in the report from the commissioners, report from Dick Goffrey, he will no longer be able to be the chair after 10 years, and it has to do with health issues in his family. So he will be stepping down as the chair. So we'll see. I'll tell you who's the next chair when I see you next time. Okay, the opioid settlement. The commissioners approved the request from the county administrator for Van Buren County to file the necessary forms for the county to become eligible to receive funds from the opioid lawsuit. And that's a step that we had to take in order to be eligible. The state of emergencies, we, the commissioners approved the extension of the county's declaration of the state of emergency until June 30th, 2022. And this action was requested by Van Buren Cass District Health Department. All public meetings must be in person, though, as required by the state government. There were some bills that were, had been considered to see if we could still meet remotely through the Open Meetings Act being set aside, like it had before, so we could meet by Zoom, but that didn't pass, neither of those bills passed. So we will be meeting in public. Then the last item is appointments. Commissioners approved the following appointments to various county committees and boards. Melanie Giddings to the Public Transit Local Advisory Council, Lisa Eimer to the Land Bank Authority, Sandy Hansen to the Library Board, and myself and Don Hansen to the Region Four Area Agency on A.G. And that's all I have for you today. And I, take any questions, if you have any?
Questions, Scott?
No? Okay.
Got nothing? Thanks, Gail. Appreciate it. Have a good night. All right, that takes us to the consent agenda items A through E.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through E.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? See, none. This is a roll call?
Arnold.
Yes.
Onooki.
Yes.
Schleck.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Takes us to old business. City Council will be asked to take the following actions regarding the proposed beach closure and pier barrier ordinance. First, we need to hold a public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is open. All right, Kate, we went through this last time. Walk us through where we are, changes, kind of additional clarification. We've had some emails, and just what we've learned since last we met.
Sure. So again, this is before you, and this is for the adoption of the ordinance to establish a process for closing the city beach waters and piers due to inclement weather or to prohibit violations of closure orders and to provide penalties for violations. We did make some changes. As of last time, we did hear from council, wanted a very healthy fee on there attached. So it has been moved from $50 to $1,000, and that really reflects the severity of the actions of crossing these barriers or violating closures of those areas. And that's within state law. You can make those civil infractions, which are not misdemeanors, they're civil infractions. You can set those fines accordingly. What we have here is a result of almost two years of work, about a year and a half of work between city staff and safety surveys and the ad hoc safety committee for setting up criteria for closing the beaches, nature of prohibited conduct, what does it mean to have an extreme sport? And of course, we modeled a lot of this off of the land order that was issued by the DNR. So we've made those changes, we're reflecting here, and we're trying not to deviate too much from them because we were setting them as the standard and kind of following that. Is there anything in specific that anyone would like, any questions on, or you want to take public comment?
I see, yeah, let's go public comment first, and then I just, I think at some point in time, just harp on a little more on kind of why you're, why we're sticking to kind of standard language. I think that's important, to kind of reiterate that at some point in time, we can come back to it if you want. But let's get some public comments. If anyone would like to comment on this topic, just go on, state your name, address. You'll have up to five minutes to state your concerns.
And good evening, Cam.
Hello, sir. Cam Doherty, 522 Edgell Street. Just want to state again how appreciative I am that the city continues to focus on beach and pier safety in South Haven. As a lake shore community who continues to see the benefits associated with our position along Lake Michigan, I believe it's incumbent upon us to continue to work towards being good stewards of that blessing. With that in mind, I've gone back over the updated version of the proposed ordinance and have just a few remaining concerns, some which I've mentioned before. In regards to conditions causing the need to close down the lake to swimming, we seem to continue to anchor on wave height as the predictor, but high waves aren't always the only predictor of dangerous swim conditions. Actually, dangerous currents can be present with minimal wave action. I wonder if we even need to be that specific in the ordinance at all? Can we, can it not simply state as conditions warrant, and then we leave ourselves open to making more specific calls that way? I'd also like to restate my concerns with the allowance of body surfers during dangerous conditions. Yes, those swimmers will have swim fins, but by nature of the sport, there is no flotation device, and that is the chief concern here. The last thing I'd like to have addressed is enforceability of any no-swim ordinance. If we remain a swim-at-your-own-risk beach, are we certain that we can even enforce this ordinance? Do the two things not contradict each other? This is a question I asked numerous times during my time on the Beach Safety Committee that I don't feel was ever adequately addressed. Additionally, if concerned, if conditions change while swimmers are in the water, which was the driver of multiple drownings in South Haven, chiefly the drowning deaths of Marty Jordan, 13-year-old Theron, and Brandon Chambers, I do not believe we can enforce the removal of swimmers from the water. I don't actually believe the city has the jurisdiction to do so. And if the swimmers entered during favorable conditions, I do not believe we could enforce a fine related to the new ordinance. Just food for thought there that I think we should do our due diligence on. I want to make sure everyone understands, I am 100% in favor of any measures we take to improve beach and pier safety. I'm all in favor of the ordinance in and of itself, and in favor of the gates, but if the goal here is to keep people safe and not just punish or cover associated costs, we have some more work to do. There are solutions. We do have avenues to help with enforceability of this. We just have to be willing to execute on that and be open to those proposals. Bare minimum, I request that we address the jurisdictional enforceability concerns I posed before moving this to a vote. Thanks so much.
Sounds good. Thank you, Cam. Appreciate it. Kate, do we want to kind of collect some questions and comment at the end? Because I mean, just one or two there, we can come back to them. I wrote a few of them down, so we can do that.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I thank the city council for considering the Beach Safety Committee report. Unfortunately, I am concerned that the desire to check a box that something is completed has moved away from what can save lives. Because of my limited time, I do incorporate my comments that I've provided in writing along with attachments and support thereof. The key question is, what was done differently last year, a year with no drownings? I do not believe that it was purely because of the lower lake level. I know there was a lot of education, the beach text alerts, kudos to our Shays group, and I'm sure many efforts of others. What can be learned from those and taken forward to save lives without ordinances to enforce when the city cannot fill all the positions it has now? And regardless of how high a fine is set, although I do think 1,000 is a bit excessive based on the fines in state law, in fact, the law that, on which the rule was ordered that is referenced as the basis for this, twice as much as that, the fines will not deter people because they most likely will not know of the fines because it's not adequately published, and they do not know the dangers of the lake nor the pier, which are the main factors in causing the death. And as we've heard, it's the constant change, or the abrupt change of the lake that causes the problems, as supported by not only what Cam just said, but some of the stats I provided earlier today in an attachment. The most critical aspect seems to be education on the dangers of Lake Michigan and walking on the piers. As we have heard, those racing to the lake do not see the flags. More importantly, the flags are not best situated for them, and once they're in the water, we cannot require them to be removed. And with so many public beaches, seven for South Haven, it takes more than 30 minutes to change a flag. So how are these going to be enforced? And it doesn't apply to private beaches where drowning can also occur. These dangers come very quickly, and lake conditions are what cause it. And it's not just wind, it's not just height, and it's not based on the National Weather Service. It's based on people seeing what's happening. The stringent requirements that you have in this ordinance will make it impractical and not address the concern that causes deaths in the lakes on our shores. We do not need to spend an estimated $20,000 on barricades that do not even close off the pier because we lack gates. We don't have the same situation as in Holland, which was the comparator. The question to consider is, how can we quickly inform people, not only entering the lake, but more importantly, in the lake, to get them out so nothing happens to them and prevent them from going on the pier? With that comes education for these people. Do we really need a huge expensive gate? Don't take me wrong, I'm not against protecting people, but I want focus on what will actually protect the people. This provides a way to put up a sign, I'm sorry, in the committee, a rope was discussed, not a huge expensive gate. A rope would provide a way to put up information and would not be a huge obstruction if, God forbid, Shays had to go out on the pier to rescue somebody. We don't need to put up an impediment to save somebody that they can circumvent, but then provide a barricade to Shays when they're trying to save somebody. I do appreciate that much work has gone into the draft ordinances. I do not think these are the right steps. No fine is going to educate people. Safety is how we make our beaches and piers safe. Education. These ordinances should not be passed at this time. Focus should not be on finding ways to check a box, but on finding ways to make sure people understand the dangers when they enter the lake. Last, I caution the city council to approve these ordinances because they could create contentious situations for our code enforcement officers when ticketing someone entering the lake and unable to make someone leave the lake that had already been in there. And that focus is misplaced because the anchor needs to be getting people out of the lake when the conditions change immediately, and a flag several feet from the lake do not inform them of that, and texts to phones are not received because the phones are on the beach, stains dry, while the people are in the lake drowning.
Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway. When I was thinking about the last meeting when you talked about this ordinance, I can remember I used to fish on the pier years ago when I worked at Palisades. I live in Jackson. I'd come here and fish on the pier for a couple hours, and I'd go to my meetings at Palisades. We had, they had a huge gate and fence on. It was probably six feet high and extended out into the, to the water. You'd know where you can get around it unless you climbed around it, whatever it was. But when I saw the pictures on the package today, it looks like it's just a little three-foot fence anybody can jump over, and I guess it's just a deterrent. But I was just thinking, I fish on the pier in the fall, I don't do it in the spring, but I can see a bunch of fishermen that are coming. A lot of guys fish on the pier from hour, hour and a half out of town, Kalamazoo, DeWajac, you name it. And if they get over to the pier two hours before sunup, and that pier is, gate is locked, I don't know if they're gonna, I won't, I won't jump over it because I live right here, I can go fish the next day, but some of these guys may, may, I say a lot of them will probably jump over the fence and go fishing, and they may be subject to a 500 or 1,000 dollar fine. So the fact that it was closed the night before, I don't think somebody's going to get out there at two hours before sunup and unlock that gate for the fishermen. So, thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else? All right, see no other comments? Want to close that public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is that good?
Motion, second, to close public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is closed. All right, so, next, we will be asked to consider the adoption of the proposed beach closure and pier barrier ordinance.
I will make a motion to adopt the proposed beach closure and pier barrier ordinance.
Is that good?
Excellent. We've got a motion, we've got a second. Now, Kate, let's knock a few of these questions out.
Okay.
One of the concerns is flexibility regarding being able to close the beach, i.e., is it just the wave height?
It's not just the wave height. In fact, if you read the ordinance, it reads, "The city manager, the police chief, harbor mast, and the director of South Haven Area Emergency Services Authority, i.e. the fire chief, shall each independently have the authority to close or partially close a public beach or due to a health and human health and safety risk." And then it goes on to say, including but not limited to. That's not limited to. So human health and safety risk is really the standard.
Body surfers, so these are the people that, I know Chris tried to do a good job last time of talking about a body surfer, and I think, some of us think of the person that just runs in and just...
Sure. There's, I guess, there are, there is equipment that people use, but more importantly, we specifically did take the list from the DNR because we've been to a number of meetings and participated with conversations around the state because of the land order coming out from the DNR. There is a pretty substantial extreme sports, if you want to call them that, people who participate in these who, who have been communicating quite with the DNR, and are very passionate about their sports and do not want to be regulated out of using the lake at these times when they're using it according to their craft. So we are sticking with that, that kind of list, kind of heavily relying on what has been happening at those conversations. And while may, while it may not have like a body board, most of them do, it's the body surfing one that has the webbed hands and the fins and whatnot. So we kind of feel very strongly about sticking with the land order criterion there.
Is there a, I mean, I guess, my question would come to mine as well, so how do I, how do I know I'm the enforcement person, you're, I mean, is there a list? Is there equipment? How do I know you've got the right stuff?
Sure, we'd be going through training scenarios with our, with our staff as to what falls under what.
Okay. Which leads to the next question, forcibility and training, and which we know that's a process. We are not ready today to do this.
No. Those are things that when you go to implement any law that, or any ordinance that the council would undertake, we hire people, we go through training scenarios, and we give them criteria, we give them processes and protocols to follow. So that wouldn't be written in an ordinance, that's something you kind of, you know, take out later on, but you follow what has been passed here tonight.
That will follow what?
And so in doing so, as this has been written as a civil infraction, this does not need a police officer to issue, and I know people have been asking, you know, does that mean I can't walk along the surf? This is when you're entering the water or attempting to enter the water, when there has been a closure or a partial closure. So that means when people who are, been told that this is closed, and then affirmatively act later on, right? I know that there's been questions about how do people know when this has changed? I believe that this summer, which, again, I appreciate the commentators noting that we did not have any drownings this year, but more importantly, we did not have calls for drownings this year. And that was due to impart, I think, for the wide educational push that was done this year, the NICSIL alerts. Anytime the flag system was elevated to a more critical level, those alerts were pushed out to everybody who signed up. We are using that again next year. Shays had more folks out there, talking to people, why you wouldn't want to go out on a day like where the water has awash the pier. So it's education outreach, and those were two things, and I understand people think that we're taking a box, but we went through a pretty exhaustive beach safety committee, and these are things that came out of that. We implemented those last year and started to implement them before the beach season started. This is just one more thing that we're trying to implement, that safety review is, has suggested we do this. So that's why this is here before you tonight.
Yeah, and I would agree. I know we've got some media here tonight, but I do, I mean, I would, a lot of the local stations are doing a better job with sharing information when it's a red flag day, bad surf day, you know, don't make the drive over to the lake, stay home, it's dangerous. So I think the more we can rely on the media to help us, and, and the question was raised about education. There's been, I mean, a lot of efforts through the years to educate. I know I've had discussions with our state legislators, gee, could this be part of a curriculum? What was it, the Respect the Power campaign, I know that, but it's the whole, you know, video series that was done, is very well done, and it's just getting it in the right hands at the right time and, you know, instilling the importance. So this is, again, it's just one other tool in our toolbox to try to remind people, it's not a good time to go in the water. So what else was, came up? Well, the question about if someone's, the fishermen, as far as going out, I mean, the plan would be, it's open unless we close it for inclement weather or bad conditions. So if someone opts to go out when it's bad weather, then...
Well, that's why you have such a hefty fine, right? You're trying to give people, there are consequences for their option. This is a dangerous scenario, you don't want to go beyond that. If you do, these are the consequences, but more importantly, you're trying to incentivize people not to go beyond the barriers. And yes, they're not, they're not 10-foot-tall chain-leak fences. A person could go around them or climb over them. Unfortunately, you can do your best to try to accommodate every crazy thing a person could do, but we're also trying to understand that we're giving as many tools as we can to people who are going to read the signs and understand, well, the gate's locked, I guess I can't go any further. That was what the Beach Safety Committee actually suggested, that this is just, it's a barrier, it's giving everyone else the, everyone the opportunity to know that this is a closed facility at this point.
Okay. So continue to work with media, press, you name it, to make sure that we're getting the word out there. Sounds like we have some work to do to figure out how we're going to, obviously... Sounds like we have some work to do to figure out how we're gonna, obviously, let people know that they're in the water, it's time to get out of the water.
Absolutely.
That's, I mean, to be figured out. So work to get done before this all happens and we jump back in the water in the spring. All right. Other questions, comments?
I do.
What you got?
First of all, I'm for the ordinance, and when I seen the videos of the caretakers or parents pushing the baby stroller out on the pier when it was waves crashing over, that's what did it for me for the gate. But as far as that goes, I was hoping to ask a few questions on the enforcement side of the chief of police, Nash Shays. I know it's a rough time of year for people going on vacation, so. The question I have is on the enforcement side, I guess maybe, if you can answer that for me. You said a police officer doesn't have to write the infraction?
No.
So that can be done by?
Code enforcement official.
Okay. So is this gonna add cost to our code enforcement agency at all, or have we not decided that? I know at one of the meetings, I asked for kind of a plan of action, how are you gonna do enact the ordinance?
Sure.
Have we made any headway on that? Or I know you've talked to staff about it and procedures, but I'm kind of wondering as far as the process and procedure of who's responsible today for watching the weather and watching the beach, you know, and how that all kind of works.
Right. We do have an idea of bringing on a seasonal code enforcement person, personnel, who would be responsible for looking at the beaches and enforcing civil infractions that occur on there, that could be dogs on the beach, alcohol on the beach, or anything like that. Anything that's a civil infraction that could be monitored by those seasonal code enforcement operators or employees. We would be going through a whole monitoring process as to who they would fall under. Of course, we have some new turnover in our, in our building department, but we are seeing that, that we have been hearing what folks are saying, they want to have more enforcement of the ordinances on the beaches. And this is one way that we tried to set this up so it was not so dependent on a police officer being down there, because we know it's the summertime, we've got limited resources. But one thing we could look at is having seasonal officers who are code enforcement, who can, who can monitor those and who can do that. Now as to when the pier barriers get shut, that would probably be analyzing the wind and the waves and everything like that, and plus, we have a number of different people here cited in the ordinance who could do this, the city manager, Shays, Natalie, Brandon. So we have got a couple different officers of the, of the city who can, who can take care of that, that time. But as for your question as to who can write the infraction, it's a code enforcement officer.
Thank you. And then lastly, I'm confused, and it's my own ignorance probably, but as far as the costs, are we gonna have Shays bill out the cost of now with this ordinance?
Shays can bill out costs.
Can or will?
Can. They're a different organization, they're a different authority from us, but we can, the city also has a cost recovery under our ordinances, so if we have police time, staff time, public works time, we can bill out our costs, and we can work with Shays to see if they can bill out their costs as well.
Thank you.
Because we are one of a couple of different communities.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And we could, once we get that all hammered out, add that into this as needed.
It can always be amended.
It could be amended. And I would be in favor of recouping those costs.
Right.
So, any other questions?
My question's about enforcement, now we know how. Mine's related to what Ms. Doherty mentioned. Can it be enforced? That, so someone incurs a civil infraction, then how, and they challenge it, then are we tied up in legal costs trying to fight this?
Well, a civil infraction can be done one of two ways, there's a municipal court or there's, there's a district court, and there's processes that are established in state law on how they can all be done. So yes, this is enforceable. And I should say that our jurisdiction is within the city. I know we've received some emails about, you know, are we gonna be enforcing this on private property or on beaches not in the city? Absolutely not. Our jurisdiction is within the corporeal limits of the city as well as public beaches. So we can do what we can on public beaches within the city. And like I said, and I, I do believe that this is enforceable, but I do want to caution that if, if the conditions change while a person is out of the water, they have not violated the ordinance because they weren't entering or attempting to enter at that time. We would ask them to come out of the water, but entering after, or being entered, being in the water after the conditions change, that's, that's kind of a, I can't really, you really couldn't take it for that.
Yeah. Then my, the next question I had, Ms. Housley brought that up about the size of the gates, and then that got me thinking about what she mentioned about police and fire response, and they're not here, but maybe Bill Hunter could, because I'm guessing his department was involved in design. It's a 12-foot gate, is that, that's big enough for a standard car? Could a, you know, rescue vehicle get through there? Could a, and obviously, we can't get very far on the south pier, but on the north pier, fireworks, can the fireworks get out there?
Right. Well, we, we took, we understand how those piers are used now. There's already on the, on the south pier, you can't really drive too far into that, there's a substantial lift that comes there anyway. So it was really trying to work with what those structures already have. And again, and again, these are federal structures that we would be applying for a license agreement to install this beach, beach, I'm sorry, pier barrier on. We would not be taking the property over from the Corps of Engineers, it would still remain federal property. We would just have a license agreement to operate the pier barrier and to close it in times that we deem unnecessary.
Okay. And then my last one, and it's not really a question, but the mayor already touched on it, education would definitely be a push that we want to continue with. I remember with my time on the Harbor Commission, there was a direct fueling ordinance, and they had the local ambulances kids drawing pictures, posters, you know, to get the word out, and so maybe that's something else we can pursue and-
It's a good idea.
-help spread the word, and so, okay. That was my questions.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just wanted to go back to the code enforcers who would potentially be able to approach swimmers violating the ordinance. Do you think there would be a point where some would be kind of competitive or refusing to get out of the water? And if that was the case, do we have a plan that would help that be resolved in a safe manner?
Mm-hmm. So I can tell you, actually, having worked in some of these municipal parks and beaches many, many years ago, people are not overly excited when you tell them they're doing something wrong. And you can, there's a lot of different ways you can do, get around compliance, but a lot of things, sometimes you, you do need someone there to back you up. We do have officers on 24 hours a day, and should something happen, go wrong, these code enforcement officers would have direct access to having police, police officers back them up.
Okay. And so you don't foresee the enforceability aspect of it being an issue at all if we are short-staffed or something like that going into next summer?
Well, it's hard to foresee what's going to happen, but we do know that there has been labor shortages all through every industry last year. The idea is that we may be looking at increasing our seasonal pay to make sure that we, we have positions filled this year. So like I said, there's a lot of things that are coming into the pipeline right now. But no, I don't see an issue with, with us getting enforcement officers out there. We do have a new parking system, we have different ways that we can utilize different positions. So I don't foresee that as being an issue, but what I do want to say is that this, this council will be possibly enacting this ordinance, it's my job to carry it out.
Thank you.
Next question. George?
Just first, one comment, then one question. So I do think that the ordinance is the first step, and then communication, I think, is the big next step. And I think that will be a big help in making sure that we again have another safe summer next summer. One of the things that was brought up is the cost of the gate, and I don't know, do we have an estimated cost of the gate?
We have an estimate of $20,000, and it's based on the cost of materials installation. Of course, we are, we are working with three different steel areas here in town to make sure we can get those, those items in, but we're looking at the same kind of materials as everybody else. So that's, that's the estimate that we've gotten based on the dimensions we've, we've priced out. So that's the best we've got right now, and we have been diligently calling, but of course, it was kind of the end of the year, and some folks don't return phone calls.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. If we've got nothing else, we've got a motion, and we have a second, to adopt the proposed beach closure and pier barrier ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no. It is approved. Go to work. Thanks, everybody, for your comments on that one, by the way. And we will continue to work on it. It is a work in process. That takes us to new business. City Council, we asked to consider the approval of the following special event applications. First, we have special event 2021-35, the Rotary Pancake Breakfast, to be held on July the 3rd, 2022, from 6:30 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. to be held at the Huron Street Pavilion.
Make a motion to approve special event 2021-35, the Rotary Pancake Breakfast, to be held on July 3rd, 2022.
Second. Motion and a second. Okay, pretty straight ahead, it's the pancake breakfast.
It's pretty standard. This is one we like to do every year with Rotary, and it is a great fundraiser for them to go ahead and seed this for other organizations. So again, this will be at the Huron Street Pavilion, July 3rd. They've got all their requests in here about the number of parking spaces, they're a pretty organized group.
Yeah, they are. Very good, thank you. Public questions, comments on this one? They've got all sorts of flavors, regular, blueberry. Council comments? Nothing. We have a motion, we have a second to approve the 2021, actually, the 2022 Rotary Pancake Breakfast. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, it's approved. Next special event, 2021, are these supposed to be 21?
Well, they came in, in 21, so we kept it 21.
Gotcha. Sorry, you got me thinking, I'm like, what am I, sorry. 2021-38, We Care Incorporated Island Sit 2022, to be held on February the 26th, 2022, from 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. to be held on the Phoenix Street Center Island.
Make a motion to approve special event 2021-38, the We Care Island Sit 2022, to be held February 26th, 2022, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the Phoenix Street Island.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Kate?
Again, this is a, an annual thing here we got with We Care. This is a fundraiser that they do so they can raise supplies that help needy folks in our community. I do see Erica Morrison here, if you'd like to have her come on up. But again, this is a, an annual event they have every year. And Erica has extended the opportunity for council members to come and join them from the 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So I'm not sure if she's reached out to any of you individually, but if you'd like to sign up for, I think it's an hour at a time? Hour at a time to do the We Care Sit? Erica's leading folks.
Like it. Do you want to come share? Would you like to share and come on? You do great things, come tell us.
So I'm Erica Morrison, the executive director at We Care, and this is actually our 40th anniversary. So we were incorporated in 1982, June 7th, and so this year, we celebrate our 40th year in the community of South Haven. So we are very excited about that. We have a big goal this year of $40,000 to celebrate our 40th anniversary. So that's throughout the entire month of February, we're gonna have different events and things to celebrate that, so it's gonna be a great time that culminates in our annual island sit. So we do invite you guys to come out. We're gonna have an hour that we're calling Officials and Influentials Hour. So we would love to have you guys join us there with Shays and the police department, our senators and our representatives, everybody. We're reaching out to all of our officials and influentials. So we invite you guys to be part of that hour. We haven't set the hour yet, so that's coming. Our goal for the island sit last year, we raised 19,000 just at the island sit, and we raised 30,000 over the month of February. So obviously, the island sit is a huge part of that end goal for us. It was almost two-thirds of our entire month was raised just at the island sit. So this is also in conjunction with 103.7 FM, Cozy FM. Paul Landdecker's always out there and makes me speak on the radio, and so it's a good time for everyone, and he always gets lots of hype and goodwill and everything, too. So we, yeah, so I think that was everything on my notes. Do you guys have any questions?
Great event.
All right. And can I just say, by the way, BTW, thank you so much for letting us use the downstairs for the Train and Trees event that we just completed. We don't have a total amount in that we've raised, but it's probably somewhere around 10,000, so thank you so much for letting us do that. Oh, and we do meet over 10,000 needs a year in the South Haven, Greater South Haven community, and about half of all of our utility bills are paid to the city of South Haven that we help. And we've helped with almost $100,000 in utility bills a season, so that's about $50,000 that goes to the city. So just a plug there for the island sit.
Awesome. Thank you again. You guys do great work. Were there public questions on this one? Nope. Come support. Council, good? Good.
I have done that before, it is the most fun I've ever had in long underwear.
Noted. I like it. That's good. All right. Motion and a second. On that note, motion and a second to approve special event 2021-38, the We Care Islands at 2022, February the 26th this year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, we are approved. Thank you again. Next, City Council, we asked to consider the approval of traffic control order 21-002, no parking on the south side, eastbound lane on the 300 block of Elkenberg Street.
Make a motion for the approval of traffic control order 21-002.
Second. All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Mr. Hunter is seated, and I'm assuming you're our guest speaker here.
Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. A few months back, staff was asked to put the, some no parking signs up around the 300, 300 block of Elkenberg. Before we do that, we always have to check and see if there's an active traffic control order, in which there wasn't. The current restrictions at that time was just a yellow curb, so before we could do that, we, we had to enact a temporary one, which we did. We thought it was a good opportunity at, at that time to reach out to the neighborhood and see, is there a reason for the south side or the north side? Because by that park, all we need to do is maintain two traffic lanes plus one parking. Your traffic lanes are set by ash toe, usually about 10 to 12 feet, and parking's eight. So with it being 20, with being 32 and a half feet, we can restrict parking to one side or the other. So we reached out, we sent over 132 letters out. I received exactly three phone calls and three emails. So majority of it was the south side, was the south, the existing control. So in front of, in front of City Council is just enacting what's always been painted. We actually looked through our records, and we even went on Google Earth, and you can still see the yellow curb, though, so it was painted for one reason or another. It was just never an official traffic control order that was put in place. I do want to, there, there was one individual that did call, and he wanted to bring up about opening up Humphrey on the other side. Back in 2018, we, I had that in front of City Council to restrict the parking on the north side of Humphrey. Humphrey, similar situation, but you actually have a smaller road. With it being a park there, we can't just have open, no restrictions, have to have restrictions on either one side or the other. Parks draw a lot of people to them. I mean, it's, it's kind of at spurts, and so we need to control it either one side or the other. So I don't see a reason why we would open that up, and I just would, we just, I would recommend, actually, we just maintain that existing control order as, as it sits right now. maintain that existing control order as, as it sits right now. And I'm here to answer any questions City Council might have about this traffic control order right here.
Sounds good. Good explanation. Any questions? Pretty straight ahead. Sounds good. Are there any public questions on this one? If so, come on up. Name, address.
Dan Agnello, nine six four Everett Parkway. First, I was surprised that they sent out a hundred and thirty-two letters or notices, and only had six responses. So that just shows me, people in the neighborhood, I guess, just don't care and whatever, because a lot of times, like, you drive down there, I did see the yellow line there, but there's no, no parking signs on it. But there's always parking at both sides, and usually when there's stuff going on, there's people stopping in there right in the middle of the street, and you can't get by and everything. But I think it's a good idea to put the signs up on the south side. But I'd like, I should see the comment about putting up another, maybe opening up another street. But again, it's the smallest street as it is, and there's not much parking there for the number of people that go to that park. And the church was upset at all parking. They park in the church parking lot, so they went up, put up, paid to put up extra chains on all their driveways. They had about five or six driveways, and they put up these plastic chains so that nobody parks in the church parking lot. So parking is a problem there, but I think this has to be done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? All right, seeing none. We've got a motion and a second to approve traffic control order number twenty-one dash zero zero-two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's approved. And Mr. Hunter's already seated. We are going to receive an update from Mr. Bill Hunter, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. Going to go over the Department of Public Work updates. Concrete stand pipe replacement, still working with Baird Company on the financing for that. That's actually the seven-year capital improvement plan on the water distribution side. Well, distribution system materials inventory, that was actually an amendment to, or an addend, not amendment to, it was a change to the Safe Water Drinking Act, and we're required actually to do five hundred and fifty-one four-point verifications. We are still working on the process of how we're going to implement that. New substation project, staff has hired, actually affirmed, to negotiate necessary easements for the feed to the substation and the distribution lines. Cross connection inspections, I always put that in there just to remind people this is an ongoing thing. This will never change. There are two requirement components to this. You have site inspections and then testing of the backfill preventers assemblies. And my project, the two stations are up, those are the two main base stations. We're still waiting for the meters. They're coming in. Last week, we got, we got quite a few, but we got quite a few more to do, because this is a complete meter change out on the electric side, and we'll still be looking at the completion of twenty twenty-two. Aleworth non-motorized path, we did receive a CMAC grant for that. The total construction cost for that is three hundred and fifteen thousand. The city will pay one hundred and eighty-two seventeen, and CMAC will pay one thirty-four-seven eighty-three. Now, this is a ten-foot path, so this is a big path. So just, every time you get federal money, they want to make sure it's big. So we're getting a big path. So that's good.
There's a lot of traffic that walks on that road, and I will be so happy to have them off the street and on a sidewalk. So.
Water street planting plan, we're working with Edgewater Resources, develop specifications for the plant, for the plantings on the hill. Staff has been working on the budget. Actually, we do that every year about this time. We're already working on the next budget for City Council. United States Army Corps Beach Nourishment and Turning Basement, staff's been working with the Army Corps on a potential beach nourishment project and reauthorization of dredging for the turning basin and the channel. Kids Corner, we received a land and water conservancy grant. It's two hundred and seventy-five thousand and matching two hundred and seventy-five for a total of five fifty. We're working with Edgewater Resources on pub, on public outreach for the design of the play structure. Cemetery module, we had that ordered through BSNA, that is, to digitize all the cemetery records. This will help actually staff be able to look at things up quicker, and in the future, we should be able to allow people to log on and then do inquiries online. Covert flushing rate, trying to set up a meeting with Covert Township leadership on how to communicate this increase to the Covert users' flushing rate. Cost of service study for UFS is updated. Work session, we're planning, putting a work session together with Shossa and to go over the cost of service study updates and findings for the, for the financial projections. Small cell antennas, AT&amp;T, we're working with AT&amp;T now. They plan on putting in three small antennas. One will be a center in Phoenix, one on North Beach, one on South Beach. That'll complete, they already got the five G antenna on top of Blue, Blueberry Tank. These smaller antennas will go in and help the coverage that some of the spots they have, they're probably low, low spots. Mowing area audit, recently staff went to and got feedback from DPW staff, and where exactly all the mowing occurs. And through the audit, we discovered, actually, there are certain properties that the staff was mowing that should not have been mowing. So we sent letters out informing them that the city will no longer be taking on this cost or providing this service. So I, I thank staff, or credit staff for doing that, taking the time to audit that, and each year we're going to make sure. It's one of those things, I believe, that happened when somebody was told to do something, they added it to a list and just kept doing it and passing the list on. And so we're going to make it a practice now to make sure everything is tight. So. Blueberry tank vault project, we have contracts signed with that. It's Allied Mechanical Service, and that is to put an altitude valve in at the Blueberry Tank. What this will help us do is, this will help us be able to feed, right now it doesn't have an altitude tank, so we go on the top of, once the water goes up to the overfill, it stops. Altitude valve, what that does, it shuts it off and allows us to pressurize and feed back from the high to the low, in which, right now, we can't in that certain area. DPW building locker room improvements, we've hired GMB to do a design. This is on our capital improvement plan. Believe it or not, the locker room, the only locker room we have in the DPW building does not provide for both genders. So this is update will provide for both genders in the building. Art Center roof replacement, that was, we had that in front of City Council. Art Center did receive a macaca grant to replace the roof. They're going to be receiving thirty-eight thousand. We're estimating the total cost of that to be seventy-five. Excuse me. Splash pad donor plaque, we're working with a contractor to put that, put that in, and we'll be recognizing all the donors of the splash pad. Risk assessment ERP certification, these are one of those things that actually is through the EPA, a mandate sent down to where we're supposed to do a risk assessment of the, the water plant, the wastewater plant, which we did. Plus, we had to get our emergency response plan certification, and we did, did meet the deadline, which was twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-one, met it actually two months early. Shossa update, sorry, Shossa audit finalized. The audit is finalized. We'll be presenting that to Shossa at the next available meeting. Shossa Van Buren County ARPA funds, I've formally actually submitted on the behalf of Shossa requesting ARPA funds from Van Buren County in the amount of two million dollars for, to offset our local costs of fifteen point nine million for all the lead service replacement. Lane data, crash data from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-one, DPW staff ran data report for the limits of the project, and it appears that, based on the crashes that we've seen, that the implementation of the lane diet is working. And is there any questions? That's the end of the DPW report. Is there any questions the City Council may have on this project or other projects?
I'll look around. George, go ahead.
Bill, on the beach replenishment, is that the south beach that would get the replenishment, if it goes through?
Yes, George, and that's a very good question. Matt, with the Army Corps of Engineers, and for some reason, what we wanted to do is start actually from the, the channel, going from the, the breakwater, going south and get to the city beach. We were told, actually, we couldn't do that. So I'm working with them now, try to get our, if, if, if we're able to get the beach nourishment, to have it start in that area. For some reason, they weren't doing it because of the freshwater intake to the, the water plant. I happened to send them a map, and it, it went so far, it's kind of comical, because they were so worried about it. But I showed them a map, and we actually ran out of aerial, and I drew the line all the way out and said, here's where we're at. It's not going to matter to that intake.
Right.
For some reason, somebody told them that, and they're going back to Eagle to see if they can grant it. For some reason, it was, they weren't able to do in that area, and hopefully we can. I'm sorry, was there another question, George?
Nope, that was it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions, guys? I just had to, have you, we done any digging to see, there's some additional money. I know the state was letting out some of the COVID money, whatnot, relative to Parkside. Saw a big splash where Whitmer was. So I don't, we need to do some digging and maybe go through all of our park plans, and if there's additional money to go after, go after. So I just, could follow up on that. Seeing as you've been on the phone with AT&amp;T a little bit, did you ever have a chance to follow up with them? Remember a year or two back when we lost power, and we lost AT&amp;T at the same time, to figure out why that happened? Just because it was kind of a?
I, I can, I can try getting ahold of them and see.
I called and complained, and they said that AT&amp;T towers, or cell towers, have usually a backup generator or backup battery, and the AT&amp;T tower in town, the battery failed, or the generator failed.
So theoretically, it's funny, because they've got the new one there, but.
That was also before, actually, the, the station was up and running at the, the Blueberry Tank, and they actually have a generator there at that one.
Yeah, it's just interesting. It just posed a lot of very fascinating questions, like, what if, you know, you lose cell, we had some questions even amongst us, like, who's calling who, and so. But that's right, you're on it, so that's all. So thank you. Appreciate it, as always, for all you and your staff do. All right, we are at that point in the median, where citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda. Wendy, seeing as you're new, so this is, and just, just running for those that are here, if we've already discussed an item, it doesn't mean we get to come up and discuss it again. So this is items we have not already discussed. So if you'd like to discuss something we have not already discussed tonight, you are free to come on up. You'll have up to five minutes. Just state your name and address, and love to hear from you. Mr. Feeney.
Hello, Tom Feeney, Harbor Library Brewery, five sixteen Phoenix Street. I would just like to thank City Council and staff for letting us have the opportunity to collaborate with We Care and put on the train display downstairs. It was an absolute success. We were there. Hopefully, it didn't go too bad for the, for the staff and everything else, and the entrance and exiting. But anyhow, we estimate that we had over two thousand people that were able to visit the train display over the holiday season. I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. How's business?
Oh, good. Yeah, overall, I mean, the city's a little slow. I can expect that with the variant and everything else, but other than that, good, and I look forward to twenty twenty-two.
Sounds good.
Yep, thank you.
Be down. So thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
Dan Agnello, nine sixty-four Everett Parkway. Again, you probably are tired of listening to me about Parkside Phase Two, but I did reach out to Brad Bortka about the fact that, you know, that developer can still build a thirty-five-foot home in Phase Two. Now, he can, he can try to extend the berm and make it thirty-nine feet, like he has on Elkenberg, but the only way we can, I can prevent him from doing that is if council or the Planning Commission makes a condition that the houses can be no higher than the existing ones. Now, the ordinance, the PUD ordinance says the, any amended houses or anything in that PUD would be the same size as existing. And that's what Matt said when he applied for his Phase One addend amendment, and that's what he said in his Phase Two amendment. He even set up, got up here three times and said the same thing. But there's nothing to prevent him from using the ordinances for the plan review to build a thirty-five-foot house. Now, he, if he plans on putting a thirty-five-foot house across the street from me on Everett, I guess the ordinance allows him to do that, but there are no other houses that large in Everett right now. I sent pictures to you guys two weeks, or two weeks ago, showing you we have two-story houses, twenty-six feet high. True North built their houses. I checked with Rich Bloom. They're only twenty-six feet high. And I'd like to get the council really seriously to think about that. It's not too late, but if you let them do, build anything thirty-five feet on the other side of Everett, they could do the same thing on St. Joe. So that's Phase Two, and then Phase Three, Four, and Five are going to be the same thing. They're going to be allowed to have thirty-five-foot houses. Now, that is the ordinance. But what takes precedence? The, the PUD ordinance says they should be like the other ones, but the building plan ordinance says you can build a thirty-five-foot house. So the builder doesn't care. He says one thing, and he should at least care about the neighborhood, about Phase One. They've done a lot of things to us in Phase One that, that they shouldn't have done. They took away a lot of open space. They built those four houses over there, which they were allowed to do, because they were approved for twenty houses. But they've done a lot of things. I don't, I don't trust, I don't trust them in the second phase, Phase Two. They already talked about last fall, when they had to go back and redo their plan to go from single-family on the east side of Everett to duplex, he was always talking about moving that berm and building a three-story house. Whether he moves the berm or not, he can still build a three-story house. And I really don't agree with it, and I'm not the only one. There's people in that neighborhood, not just trailside, and people in that neighborhood are very upset with those three, two houses going up right now on Elkenberg, and I'm sure the other two are going to be just as big. Now, True North is building another house. They already dropped, putting the footings on the northeast corner of Elkenberg and St. Joe, and Rich is building a two-story house. He's not building a three-story. And I think that's the reason why Rich is not building, True North is not building those four houses in Elkenberg, because I don't think he agreed with the builder, the developer, about doing that, because he knows, Rich Bloom and True North was very good in our neighborhood. I'm the only full-time, one of the two full-time residents there, and Rich went out of his way to make sure everything went fine when the build trailside went, because all those houses went up all at once. And I was the only one there that had grass, sprinklers and everything, and he bent over backwards. And I think that's the reason why he's not building on Elkenberg, is because they, they were going to screw the rest of the people in the neighborhood, and he didn't like it. And I'm afraid that they're going to do the same thing in the rest of Phase Two. So I think the council, and we're bringing up again the Planning Commission, can do something about limiting, limiting that. I know it's all the ordinances, but they could, you guys could step up and try and stop them, because if you don't stop them now, then we're screwed. Every day, every morning, I'm going to get up, and I'm going to see a three-story house across the street from me, and I'm not going to like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Anybody else?
Mary Hasley, seven twenty-six North Shore Drive. I wasn't going to speak until I heard Dan, and I just need to supplement what he said, because an amendment was, results in, under the PUD, as having to do a complete analysis. And for the PUD to be approved, which was just assumed incorrectly in our opinion, which doesn't appear to count, that it meets the requirements, and it's supposed to benefit the community, benefit the neighborhood. How do these huge five-bedroom, two-grudge homes on Elkenberg benefit the bedroom, benefit the community? How does the interplay of the amendments excluding trailside and other PUDs from the cap, so the majority of those homes can be short-term rentals? That is not creating homes in a neighborhood within walking distance of schools. That is not increasing our pupil population to increase the state funding that we get for each student in a school. That is not creating open space. Right now, the open space for Phase Two is a detention pond that should never have been allowed. The open space that was in Phase One that was allowed to be decimated was designated open space with trees clear-cut. The Planning Commission and the City Council didn't, or I should say skirted, the ordinances for PUD, relying on the, the PUD as originally approved in two thousand and six, before the short-term rental was amended in twenty eighteen, excluding the PUDs from the ratio cap, allowing these PUDs to be second homes and worse short-term rentals that are ruining our neighborhoods. You had the opportunity to do conditions. I provided information and requested conditions be applied, and our requests were ignored, just like the neighbors' requests not to allow the four homes along Elkenberg that destroyed designated open space. And now, eight hundred thousand dollar homes, five-bedroom, two-grudge homes are going in along Elkenberg, and that area is being paneled off from the neighborhood. That is not a benefit to our neighborhood. We hope that better decisions come from some, from subsequent applications, and that it's actually put on the record the benefits to support the PUD designation and all the criteria to allow that to go forward, because an amendment is supposed to be treated as a new application. And from what I saw before the Planning Commission and the City Council, that was not done.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going on? It's going twice. All right, looks quiet. Kate, City Manager comments. Happy twenty twenty-two.
Well, happy twenty twenty to you, and happy New Year, and welcome, Wendy. I did want to just kind of mention that I did really want to give a shout out to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. They were the ones who put on the New Years in the Haven event with the fireworks. So congratulations to them for sponsoring and organizing that event. They did an excellent job. We did have some city staff and some Shays staff helping them, but they did have a lifting on this, and I think they should be committing for putting on such a wonderful event. So thank you to Jen Sistrunk and Lori Krieger for getting that done. I also wanted to thank Shays City Public Works Department and staff and Police Department for their assistance over the weekend. It went pretty calm, pretty smoothly. So thank you for them. As a reminder, if you've got a live Christmas tree and you're ready to get that out of the house, if you want to get that on the curb by six AM on Wednesday, January twelfth, or the night before, even better, best way we'll pick that up for free. So that's Wednesday, January twelfth. That is, Wednesdays are the bulk pickup day, and if they want to get those trees out there before pickup time, it will be picked up, picked up for free. Lastly, this council has our next meeting at five thirty on the seventeenth. We are having a training with Michigan Municipal League, and then, of course, our regular meeting at seven PM. And the next meeting, we'll also have to do some council, which boards and commissions council would like to be on. I know that, I know one or two have reached out to see if they can change, and then, of course, we've got Chris's old appointments and Wendy's new appointments. So if there's any changes that you'd like to see, if you'd like to switch onto another board, just let me know. I'll be working with the mayor to get that set up. So those are my comments, and happy New Year.
Thanks, Kate. Thanks, Kate. Anybody got any questions for Ms. Kate?
What do you do if you still have Republic Kirbys?
If you still have Republic Kirbys in your residential customer, give us a call. We'll come by and get those picked up.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All's good. All right, Council comments. How about if I started at my right? George, good evening.
I'd like to also welcome our new council member. And thanks to everyone for attending today and for your comments. And I'd also like to thank all those that participated in the Beach Safety Committee and laid the groundwork for the new ordinance that we passed today. So thank you for that. That's it.
Ms. Wendy, welcome. Good evening.
Thank you. Thanks. I guess I just want to say thank you for having me. I know I have a lot of learning to do, but I'm excited to be a part of this. And yeah, thank you all for being here today, and especially those who spoke. And I just have one other comment. Well, I don't know if I'm, if I can say this here, it's regarding the beach safety. But I forgot to bring it up when it was open. But I know there's the part about prohibiting swimming within 50 feet of the pier. And I feel like that's hard for people to visualize what the 50 feet is. And I'm wondering if there's a way to make that more known.
There's signage at the beach. Right there at the pier, or right there where the 50 feet start, there is a big sign.
Okay. I've been to the beach a lot. I guess I have not noticed that. Okay. Thank you. That's all for me.
All right, very good.
George said it really nice. Welcome, Wendy.
Thank you.
Welcome, Wendy. And George said it really nice about the beach safety and the pier, that this is, and I like the short-term rentals, it's something that we will monitor and adjust and continue to improve. And so that's how I hope that goes. And then my other thing, I wanted to just say thank you, attaboy, well done to Jeff Philbrandt and Annie Brown and their family. They took it upon themselves, I don't know if they did it last winter because of COVID, but they definitely have done it twice where they gave a cash award to whoever had the best-looking Christmas lights on their homes. And they got to email Annie, and then they, you know, took the most votes, and people voted, and just a fun activity. And thanks to the Philbrands and the Browns for doing that. I want my comments.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
No further comments.
Very good. All right, yeah, so thanks, everybody, for coming. Great input on beach and pier safety. It is by no means done. We will continue to learn. It will evolve, and we will do our best to make sure people are safe. And it's going to be all hands on deck. We've had discussions, and I don't know if I said it earlier, but Kate, myself, we've been having discussions, and all the staff, and I think all of council, just about code enforcement in general. So we were talking about more code enforcement. It's not just beach and pier. It's kind of throughout. I think we've all had, whether it be golf carts, or, you know, you name it, we've had these discussions. So we'll be working to get some code enforcement staff in place to make sure we can take care of some of these things. And really just thanks, everybody, again, for your support. I appreciate your faith and confidence in re-electing me, obviously. So I think we've done a good job. It's been a not-so-fun three or so years. We went from high water to COVID, and we're still in COVID, and I would like COVID to be done. So what I think we continue to be positive, proactive, and get your shots, get your boosters, you know, stay diligent. It's a lot of work, but we will continue to be open, and our businesses will continue to need our support. So shop downtown, drink downtown, eat downtown, do all that good stuff. Again, thanks to our staff. They continue to do a lot of great work every day in and day out. And just really to our residents for your patience through this whole process, last couple of years, and continue to come to these meetings and, you know, give us ideas and, you know, push us to do better. That's why we're here. We're here to listen. We're here to keep moving forward. So on that note, happy 2022, and I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thanks for coming.